Okay, ladies and gentlemen, here you, here you, here you. Let's call the village board meeting, March 28th, 2022, 6:00 PM. We'll call that to order, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, Clerk Colehagen, call roll.
Hewitt?
Here.
Washburn?
Here.
Eastman?
Here.
Clausen?
Here.
DeGroot?
He's here. So the first, the very first part of our meeting is a public hearing, and this is regarding ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty-two, which is a zoning map amendment for Yates Drive zoning map amendment application, ZMA zero three two two. Following a brief presentation by the staff, I'll ask the applicant to describe their petition. If you wish to speak regarding this particular business item, ordinance thirteen twenty-two, please fill out a public hearing form, which you can find on the table near the entrance. Once recognized, speakers should come to the podium and identify themselves with their name and address. Please speak clearly into the microphone. I'll first call people in favor of the application, and then I will call those who are opposed. Speakers must direct their, all their discussions towards the board. I will not allow interchange between members of, of the audience and the petitioner. We, we request that you do not interfere with nor interject comments while another person has the floor. Please keep all comments on the particular item before the board, and no longer than five minutes. And finally, if I, if I may ask, please turn off or mute your electronic devices, your cell phones and whatnot, so we don't have that distraction. So regarding a, a public hearing, ordinance thirteen twenty-two. Sam, did you want to take this?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the village board, the applicant requested permission to amend the zoning map from moderate density residential two to high density residential one. The applicant requested the RH1 districts, so they may construct four three-story fifty-unit buildings on the property. The RH1 district allows an unlimited number of units per building up to sixty feet tall. The applicant constructed the adjacent public infrastructure as part of their Seasons project and sees the demand for more multifamily of a different type. The site is next to State Trunk Highway thirty-one, another multifamily development and agriculture land. The site has roadway access off of Yates Road, Collector Street. The tax increment district number six project plan expected this to be developed as commercial, or original projection was. However, the site is currently zoned for residential. Additionally, there are other lands to the south within TID six that will allow for future commercial or mixed commercial residential development. The village comprehensive plan recommends mixed-use residential commercial for the subject property. The proposed RH1 zoning conforms to that recommendation. As a fiscal note, the applicant indicated they may request municipal assistance for the project. However, such a request would take place after the applicant completed their future site plan application and after a verified fiscal gap has been vetted by the village. Two-hundred-unit project on the approximately seven-and-a-half-acre site would likely have values of greater than four million dollars an acre. Such values would be in the top ten in values per acre for the village. In terms of additional considerations, Wisconsin TID law limits the amount of newly-planted residential to the land to thirty-five percent of the total district. Staff recommends prioritizing higher-density residential development inside TID to utilize this land allowance efficiently. This application coincides with that recommendation. Terms of conditions for approval, neither the village staff nor the Plan Commission recommend any. And with that, the village staff and the Plan Commission recommend the village board move to approve the ordinance. We have our friends from Fiduciary here tonight with a small presentation as well, so I'll turn it over to them.
Yeah, if you'd like to bring yourself up to the podium, make sure the green light is on your microphone. You need to turn that on.
This is on?
Yeah.
All set. Okay. Everyone, my name is Craig Raditz, Fiduciary Real Estate Development, seven eighty-nine North Water Street, Milwaukee, Wisconsin. With me tonight, Paul Schmider and Joey Wisnewski, part of my team at Fiduciary. And we're kind of reintroducing ourselves. I think everyone's well aware of the, the wonderful Seasons product community that we have going on right now, but through COVID and any, everything, it has been kind of odd not to be in front of a board more often than we have at this point. We did begin, I just want to share, we did begin in early nine, twenty nineteen. We, we came down quite a bit to Racine County and really engaged ourselves. And quite honestly, it, we have really focused almost exclusively in on Mount Pleasant. We really just have so enjoyed working with the staff, the, the temperature and your commitment to housing. I think especially impressing us has led us to, over the last two months, we have two other major residential sites that are in Mount Pleasant that we look forward to coming back and getting to, to know you all better. For today's requested rezone, we prepared a short presentation that I'd just like to run through. Let's see here, if we could go to the second page. I really just wanted to, again, share a little bit about us. We were founded in nineteen eighty-four. We're still in downtown Milwaukee. We have approximately four hundred loyal employees and really a great corporate culture. We're focused almost exclusively on multifamily residential. Our major markets, really Milwaukee and Madison make up about six thousand of the eight thousand units that are inside of thirty-seven different communities. We're up in Green Bay, one, one project in Minneapolis, and a couple down in northern Illinois. So we're very local, very hands-on. We're long-term holders of assets. We still have one of our first purchases thirty-five years ago in Madison area, two hundred and twenty units. And one of the big things we do is we often, we fully reinvest in our properties. That's how we keep them fresh. It's how we keep them strong in the communities that they are in. So, so that's just a little bit about us. This piece, we're, it's looking quite different now, but of course, this is the original piece that really kicked off the TIF efforts and, and working with the county. We bought this from the county. This is the approximately thirty-seven acres right on the corner of Braun Road and Highway thirty-one. I just want to bring you up to speed on how the progress is going. If you haven't been by the site, if we go to the next slide, this was the site plan. We worked with you. This is our Seasons product, as we call it, to create Seasons communities. These are more townhome-style residences with direct-entry garages and a really beautiful and special clubhouse. The proposed, if you can just go back one site, or one slide, excuse me, the proposed rezone on approximately seven-point-six acres is what we'll discuss here in just a second. So some of the progress, this is exciting because if we go to the next page, this is the, the clubhouse taking form. We waited as long as we could to take the picture, but we are finished. Thursday, it's being deep cleaned, and Friday, possibly Saturday, we'll be open for business. So please come on by. I do believe we'll be open this weekend, but it'll, to start leasing. It's pretty exciting. Moving on to the next slide, just gives you kind of an aerial view. We have four buildings that are under roof. Again, the first building, we expect to open August first. Got word today that it'll probably be July first. So things have really moved along well. We had a good fall season, and spring has been pretty decent here to build a community like this. So back to looking at the next slide, this is the approximately, as we said, seven-point-six-acre site. Probably very, very key to this is just at the southern end here, you can see a road that connects to Highway thirty-one. The traffic impact study showed that for the whole area, that's included in the TIF, all the way from the Finks property to Faith Bridge to Roaner up to us, that, that east-west road would be a significant help in the rest of the areas that are to be developed in the future. You can see, our plan here is to design, we have designed four fifty-unit buildings. These are three-story buildings with an underground parking for the units. It, in a minute here, I'll show some of the variances that have us very excited about being able to do a community like this. So the next page, here's kind of a graphic representation. We're always, I think this is going to be just a ongoing exercise as we move forward on this project, hopefully, in order to coordinate with some of the materials and colors over at the Seasons and yet differentiate. And I really, one of the things we do is especially with the LP siding, to take it vertical like this, it really creates a real presence for, for a community like this. So that's just an early indication of what we would come back to you with. Moving on, the unit mix is, is critical. I think quite a few of you are familiar with Tracy Cross and Associates, back when the RCEDC, and I have a slide coming up here on some of the conclusions. But Eric Dorshing and Tracy Cross Associates are foremost market study firm. I've been fortunate to work with Eric for twenty-five of my twenty-six years at Fiduciary, and he's the one that really in twenty nineteen said, you really have to go down to Racine County. And that's, I, I think all of these recommendations are directly working with him side by side. So what we want to propose on this, on these buildings is seventy percent of the units of the two hundreds are studios, one-bedroom and one-bedroom plus den. In the Seasons homes, you have almost eleven hundred square feet per unit. We do have a studio, and there's three one-bedrooms in each building, but largely those are two-bedroom buildings. And so this really starts to match of what the unit mix is desired, the unit mix that is far undersupplied here in Mount Pleasant and Racine County. So we're going to go for an average of eight hundred and thirty-five square feet. The residents will enjoy an excellent location. The clubhouse, the fitness center, and the outside gathering firepit is really going to be a nice amenity. Our goal here truly is to really look hard and to be able to bring a housing type that is not, right now, at least for three decades, has been provided here in the community of Mount Pleasant. So again, affordable option for renters of smaller units, more geared towards the demand. The Cross, the, that RCEDC, I was going to say last time, that, that was the last conference I was at before COVID, and, and I do remember very distinctly, about sixty to eighty of you were, were gathered all together to go through the RCEDC recommendations. And Cross concluded at that point that Racine County has, there's a huge pent-up demand, potentials could double in any given year for the introduction of properly-positioned product. And very specifically, Eric Dorshing of Tracy Cross has already been part of working with us on this exact mix. The second point made by Cross was that the primary product recommendations made across all housing types, and I know many of you are painfully aware of this, is that eight hundred and ninety housing units could be supplied for five years, and it would meet the demand. So there's a tremendous amount, and we're excited about that. The last slide specifically looks at the Housing Affordability Report that you just reviewed, apparently back in November. Similar is that over the last decade, housing stock has only grown two percent compared to twenty-one percent in the previous decade. The Decent, Decennial Census counted twelve thousand six hundred and sixty-seven units. Thus, in order to meet demand, an additional seven thousand thirty-three housing units over the next thirty years. And so we have two hundred and thirty-four housing units demanded every year until two thirty-four, or twenty fifty. And one more, or was that it? I think that is the end of the, end of the presentation. So it is with that that I, we just wanted to share about what we would come back with and how we truly believe in the midst of the TID and this area now all being serviced, for the most part, by SURE, the opportunity that's before us. Thank you.
Any quick thoughts from trustees? Because we're also going to have this up for business, but I believe it's on the...
It's on the consent agenda.
On the consent, so if there's something that you want to opine on, probably now would be a good time.
Mr. President, anyone else? I, I was at the Plan Commission meeting, and we did discuss this at the Committee of the Whole as well. Sam, can you, do you, do you have a slide you can pull up, or did you do a map? One of our, the concerns from Joe Mayer at the Plan Commission was simply, what does that do to the, to the balance? Because we're adding more residential, we're taking a commercial portion out of their property and adding it to the overall, back into the other parcels. And I, I think we all just want to make sure we have a good sense that this will leave us with great developable property and not negatively impact the site. And I think based on Sam kindly taking my conversation and providing this map, if he could explain a little more to us for the benefit of the public, I think it'll be nice to hear.
Sure thing. So when we created the TID, we master-planned kind of the entire area as a mixed residential commercial. So they, the, the thinking was from a, the highest level of our planning, we wanted to stay as flexible as possible across the TID. That said, there are some state limits in terms of the amount of residential that you can plat in a mixed-use district like this, which is thirty-five percent of the TID. So originally, we had kind of apportioned out a little bit of commercial and residential per property across the TID, just for planning purposes and to kind of keep things more or less even in our preliminary planning. That's why I mentioned, originally, we had kind of this southern corner here, Peg Net Residential. That said, it is currently zoned commercial, so from a base-level standpoint, they could come in with something that met the RM two code and, you know, get it approved by the Plan Commission by right. That wouldn't even go to the, the village board. So in lieu of that zoning, as well as them coming in with the ask for a higher-intensity residential district, providing something that was a different building type than we've seen in Mount Pleasant in the past couple decades at least, we thought that was worth your consideration and effectively taking that planned commercial area and shifting it to the rest of the TID. I've rerun the numbers, there's more than enough residential versus commercial capacity, so that doesn't put us on the wrong side of the state law, as well as, if you look at the map I provided, I think the logical place that that commercial would end up is in that highlighted corner there. Further to the south, Oaks Road is planned to intersect with thirty-one, which would be a controlled intersection. So we think it logical that the commercial shift down onto that future Collector Street, which is probably going to be more of a valuable commercial corridor than this corner, which has less good access, just a right-in, right-out off of Yates. So that was our thinking here, is their request was worth the consideration to shift the commercial onto a different property. We actually think there's, the location that we highlighted is probably a better commercial area for the TID anyways. So I can answer any specific questions on that if you'd like, but that's the long and short.
I spy Davis Driver sitting next to you as well, and if Davis wanted to weigh in, that'd be good, too.
I, I would mirror what Sam, that we discussed in that plane that are meeting.
Good. Okay, so, so in that case, this would be where we open the, the meeting to the public to speak on it. I have, I have nobody signed up for public comment on this particular item, but, but I'll ask anybody wanting to speak publicly either for or against this, this zoning change. Not hearing from anybody, we can close public comment on this, and... Right, and we'll, we'll take action on this a little bit later in our agenda. So from here, I go to public comment and input on anything else. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments on any matter. Please listen for the president to recognize you. State your name and address for the public record. Comments are limited to three minutes. Again, I have nobody from the public signed up to speak tonight. I'll ask anybody wishing to speak from the public. It's a great opportunity for staff to be publicly speaking if they so choose. No takers from staff. Okay, so we'll, we'll close public comment at this point. If it pleases the, the board, I'd like to go out, a little bit out of order. At this point, I'd like to move item two C, which is discussion, possible motion regarding the charter ordinance four-dash twenty twenty-two, the certification of the eleven hundred and ninety-nine signatures. Given that we've got Attorney Markowitz with us tonight to best utilize his time, because he's going to be here for the closed session as well, it's okay with everybody, let's take that piece up now. Okay, so that's what we'll do then. Any thoughts, Mr. Markowitz?
Thank you. You will recall that the charter ordinance of the village was amended in January by action taken by the board. And pursuant to section sixty-six point zero one zero one of the statutes, there was an opportunity for citizens to request a referendum on this particular subject. The clerk has certified that a petition was submitted. The number of signatures submitted was twelve hundred and eighty-two, and after review by the clerk's office, the total number of signatures accepted was eleven hundred and ninety-nine, and the required number of signatures to require a referendum is nine hundred and eighty-one. So the certification indicates that this matter is ready for further consideration by the board. Obviously, there has to be a writing of what would be in the referendum, and there has to be a time selected to do it, and that would be the next activity of the staff to make a recommendation to the board. But it's before you tonight for any action you wish to take relative to the clerk's certification, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Stephanie, everything that Attorney Markowitz said, accurate, true, modified, certified?
Yes, it is.
Is there anything else that you wanted to add?
Um, no, I've certified the numbers. I let the petitioner know what the numbers were, so statutorily have done everything I needed to do at this point.
Okay. So balls in our court.
Mr. President, I'm glad we're talking about this tonight. You know, when we, when we passed this as a board, one of the, one of the, one of the parts of our discussion about this was the fact that, that we felt confident in the decision we were moving forward. But we also knew, and it was made clear to us after asking the same question multiple ways, that, that we had a, a, there was a window of opportunity, there was a sixty-day window, that there was a process for our residents to tell us if this was something they desired. In my mind, seeing that there are eleven hundred and ninety-nine signatures that have been authenticated, it's clear to me that unfortunately, or fortunately, apparently our residents, who we represent, who we are here to, to put into action what they want and represent them, you know, it's, it's clear to me that they probably don't want that. And so I guess my question is... And so, I guess my question is, what are our options? Do we have to go to referendum? You know, I still supported it. I believe that because of the enormity of the projects we work on, some of the timelines that we, you know, we're working on committees that are building things in years that if, you know, we aren't re-elected, or, you know, there's consistency to the three years. But the residents, that's who we represent. So, Mr. Markowitz, I guess my question to you is, what are our options and alternatives?
Well, that's an open question for right now, and did you want to take that on now, or did you want a little bit more comment from the Board?
Sure, I wanted to see if there's anything else, and then I'll try to answer.
John?
Well, as far as the ordinance and everything like that, is your, do you make any type of a motion?
I'd be happy to make a motion. I'm just, again, I need a little legal guidance. Am I making a motion to rescind our ordinance that we approved because we wish now to move this forward as a non-referendum item, keep the term at two years, and continue on as, you know, as we have in the past? If that's the reasonable motion to make, then I will make it that we not go to referendum and that we rescind, or whatever the appropriate action is to take to remove our previous vote.
Well, I think I can answer the question. You have two choices at this point. One choice is to follow the procedure that the statute describes, and this matter would be set for a future referendum. And that is one choice. Another choice is because this is an action that you took that has, was in the form of an amendment of the Charter Ordinance, you could entertain a motion or make a motion to repeal the ordinance. You know, when you adopt a Charter Ordinance, you're enacting something, and if you want to wash it away, you would be repealing it, not rescinding it.
Repealing it, thank you. Okay, that was what I, thank you for that clarity.
Okay. Those are your choices at this point.
I mean, in my mind, you know, we actually, I don't think we, as a Board, ever thought that that many people would object to it, quite honestly. And again, because we knew we had the process in place to, you know, for them to react to us. And having done that, and seeing that it's not the wishes of our community to go to a three-year term, I will then make a motion to repeal the ordinance that we created. I don't have the number with me, but I would make a motion to repeal the ordinance so that our terms...
4-2022.
4-2022, keeping our terms at two-year terms.
And then I will second.
Okay, so, there's a motion by Washburn, seconded by Clausen. Any further discussion? I'd like to just make a couple of comments. Again, when we passed this, I believe in good faith, back in January, I believe one of the trustees mentioned, and she's not here tonight, I think it was Trustee Anastagio, you know, she asked, you know, is this something that, you know, should have been going to referendum beforehand? And we said, well, no, based on the way the law is, we can pass this, and if there is a petition for referendum at that point, we can duly consider it. And so, we passed the ordinance, and, you know, now we've heard from the people, by my count, 1,199 residents are just saying, wait a minute, not so fast. And we have to listen to that. So, and a number of those residents that signed are certainly people that I know. And, you know, we've heard from other, you know, highly-placed people in the community. I know that trustee, or, excuse me, Supervisor Trotter has called most of us, and I've had a number of conversations with Don, our friend, highly respect, you know, highly respect him, and he, I don't know if he particularly cared one way or the other which way the ordinance went, but he was concerned about the public way in, and I believe that he even circulated the petition. So, you know, given, you know, that we've heard from our friends and neighbors, I would support repealing this as well, and let's move on.
If I might make a follow-up to that, before we voted on it as a committee, as a Board, I did make some phone calls. I tried to reach out to those that I knew were more on the right, more, sorry, more on the left, more on the right, more in the middle, but I didn't call 1,199 people. But I got a very positive response from it. And so, I think because of that, it allowed me to think that possibly our village residents would be in favor of it, and that, you know, we were making a good decision. So, having said that, you know, obviously, we are wrong, and I'm going to support the, obviously, the repeal as well.
Okay, in that case, there's a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Hewitt?
Aye.
Washburn?
Aye.
Eastman?
Aye.
Clausen?
Aye.
DeGroot?
Aye, motion carries. So, that's repealed. So, from here, let's move on to closed session. I need somebody to read that motion, please.
Mr. President, I make a motion to convene into closed session per Wisconsin statutes 19.85, or F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories of disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or investigation of charges against a specific person, except where Paragraph B applies, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have substantial adverse effect upon a reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations, and G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved specifically, consideration of possible settlement of complaint filed by village employee, to discuss claims made by Jack or John Ikehurst and Michael Picula pertaining to overpayment to property taxes, and reconvene into open session to consider any motions that matters were discussed in closed session.
Second.
So, I hear a motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The Village of Mount Pleasant is in closed session. Figure, what, maybe about half an hour?
Forty-five minutes.
Half an hour to forty-five minutes to take care of this internal...
Okay.
Make a motion.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Are we, are we rolling?
They are.
Okay, excellent.
Make a motion to go back into open session.
Second.
You hear a motion in a second to go back into open session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So the, the Village of Mount Pleasant is back in open session regarding the closed session items. The second one regarding the property taxes and all that, we're, we're still discussing that going forward and, and working on that issue. Regarding the first one regarding the settlement, I think that there's a motion on that.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the settlement as discussed in closed session.
Second.
So I hear a motion in a second on that discussion. Not hearing any. Roll call please.
Hewitt.
Aye.
Washburn.
Aye.
Eastman.
Aye.
Claussen.
Aye.
DeGroot.
Aye. A motion carries. Let's move on to item B, which is the consent agenda. Trustee Hewitt.
Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
So I hear a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. So to the backside here. Finance, legal, and license, we've got, we've got one issue to discuss. Discussion possible motion regarding resolution two dash 2022 authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $4,750,000 of general obligation promissory notes, series 2022B.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution two dash tw- 2022 authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $4,750,000 in general obligation promissory notes, series 2022B.
Second.
So I hear a motion in a second. This is something that we had discussed at some length at the previous committee of the whole meeting. I see that we have in, in chambers Todd Tase from Ellers. If we, if we wanted to, we could bring Todd up and have him update us on.
He's been waiting. Oh, gosh.
If, if Todd's just waiting for the approval, in that case, we'll, we'll roll with it.
We do have a very good understanding of, of the bonds.
Okay, so in the matter of the, of the bond issue, roll call please.
Hewitt.
Aye.
Washburn.
Aye.
Eastman.
Aye.
Claussen.
Aye.
DeGroot.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks, Todd.
Thank you, Todd.
Item C two, we took care of at the, at the head of the meeting, so we're going to move on to item D, which is community development issues. We've got discussion possible motion regarding campus park phase two bid award and acceptance.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to approve the low bidders for the campus park phase two as shown on the bids exhibit totaling $5,171,000.
Second.
So I hear a motion in a second. This is something that we discussed again at some length at, at the committee of the whole. Mr. Schultz, if you'd like to just give us a brief recap of the, the length and breadth of this particular project.
Sure thing. So this is acceptance of all the low bids with all the alternate bids included, which include pathway to Smolinski Park, some event lawn lighting, some interior pathways, some cricket amenities that we will also add among some other minor items, as well as some final punch list items to include like fire safety and things as discussed in your exhibit. With that, that's about it. You guys approve this tonight and we'll get to work on signing those contracts.
How soon do you think people will be able to start?
Hopefully within the next month, month and a half, we'll see people out there doing earthwork and then they'll be out there the majority of the summer and hopefully we'll have the park complete by roughly September of this year, depending on weather. So we'll keep the board all updated and we'll also provide an update webpage on the village website for the community to check in throughout the summer.
So weather permitting, this, this should be finishing up before, before the snow flies anyways.
Hopefully, that's the goal.
Hopefully, we have enough money left somewhere to have a big party to celebrate this part, too.
Yeah, so hopefully we have a nice fall and everyone can enjoy it a little bit late into the fall.
It's gonna be this fall. It's gonna be amazing, so.
Any other thoughts from the trustees? Okay, so the motion on, on the floor is accepting the, the bid award, so roll call please.
Hewitt.
Yes.
Washburn.
Aye.
Eastman.
Aye.
Claussen.
Aye.
DeGroot.
Aye. Motion carries. Well, let's move down to public works. We've got a few items here. Number one, discussion possible motion regarding utility oversizing policy. Mount Pleasant Sewer Utility District, number one, and Mount Pleasant Stormwater Drainage Utility District.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the utility oversizing policy for Mount Pleasant Sewer Utility District, number one, and Mount Pleasant Stormwater Drainage Utility District.
Second.
I hear a motion in a second. Mr. Byer, is this something that you'd like to speak to?
Yes, sir. So this had come up at the, at a few previous utilities commissions meetings. We've had quite a few requests from developers for, to have the utility share in the funding of, of oversizing, whether it be sewers or sanitary sewers or storm sewers. And the Utilities Commission tasked me with drafting a policy. We've had some unwritten policies in the past. There have been situations where we've cost shared in, in oversizing, but it was good to get something on paper so we have something uniform, something consistent that we can apply across the board when these requests are received. And it also gives guidance as to when or, when something is or isn't applicable as far as the policy goes. So that's what you have in front of you. The Utilities Commission blessed this at their last meeting.
Yes, we did. Sorry, yes, we did. And, sorry, I, and in fact, I was a big proponent of creating a written policy because under chapter 74 that we approved, it stated in there that we would pay for oversizing. And then in discussions at the utility, it was more or less, okay, what does that mean? So this, I think, is really important. And we also did look at comparisons of oversizing policies. Tony did a very good job, he and Lindsay, of putting together a chart of comparisons showing what other communities did versus what we didn't have in place. And so firmly putting this in place makes it very easy for all staff as well as the developer to understand what they're walking into and what their parameters are. And we also included the stormwater oversizing, which was very important as well. And puts us again a little bit at the top of the pack in, in terms of that kind of oversizing policy. So anyway, great job on, on the behalf of staff and the commission was very happy to put the policy firmly in place.
So when it comes to storm water and sewer issues, bigger is better? Oversizing?
Well, bigger is better for not, yeah, okay. I don't know. Sorry, I don't get it. I'm having a blind moment maybe.
That's fine. That's fine. You're good.
What?
Anything? All right. Thank you, Tony. So in the, in the matter of the motion regarding the oversizing policy, roll call please.
Hewitt.
Aye.
Washburn.
Aye.
Eastman.
Aye.
Claussen.
Aye.
DeGroot.
Aye. Motion carries. We've got discussion possible motion regarding an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Mount Pleasant and the Village of Sturdivant and its 90th Street resurfacing.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Mount Pleasant and the Village of Sturdivant for the 90th Street resurfacing.
Second.
Motion in a second. Tony, is that something we need to go back to you for?
Yes, sir. Briefly. So staff was approached by the Village of Sturdivant staff last year. They had a desire to resurface 90th Street from Washington Avenue to the Canadian Pacific Railroad, much farther south in the Village of Sturdivant. The two villages share a common boundary along the centerline of 90th Street for a short stretch from Highway 20 to roughly 16th Street, that area. So the road isn't in poor shape. We agreed it was in our CIP to, I think, a couple of years out anyway. So the time was right to draft this agreement and get this all done together. Our costs will be about 20% of the total project cost when all is said and done. But this is the agreement that will provide the framework to have Sturdivant put that through, through their paving program and then charge it back to Mount Pleasant.
So Sturdivant's running the program?
Yes, as they have about 80% of the cost, that made more sense.
And how did we work with this within the budget? Our, our 20%? Is that, is that coming out of our paving program or, and did we have that allocated? We already knew about it before we went out to bid and so forth?
Yep.
Okay. Very good.
Okay. So in the matter of the intergovernmental agreement, roll call Okay, so in the matter of the, uh, intergovernmental agreement, roll call please.
Hewitt?
Aye.
Washburn?
Aye.
Eastman?
Aye.
Claussen?
Aye.
DeGroot?
I say aye. Motion carries. Item three, discussion possible motion to approve the award of contract to Butlin Peterson Construction Company in the amount of $1,673,259 for Enterprise Way roadway and utilities.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to award a contract to Butane Peterson Construction Company in the amount of $1,673,259 for Enterprise Way roadway and utilities.
Second.
So I hear a motion and a second. This is something that we, you know, uh, learned a little bit about, uh, at the committee of the whole meeting, uh, prior to this meeting. Um, Claude, uh, kinda filled us in on what was going on. I'll just go back out to Claude. Did you have any thoughts since then?
No, again, this is part of our agreement with Ashley Capital Development Agreement. We were to extend Enterprise Way from the, uh, where it ends right now, Sturdivant, to International Drive. This fulfills our obligation with Ashley Capital.
And this road goes east and west?
Yes.
Yes, it's a two-lane street, John, yes. Unlike some of them, yes.
Well...
The other area, this was a full lane. This is multipurpose paths. Uh, yes, it's a full lane, full road, right away, John. As well as water is also in this project as well.
And there's water included, yeah.
Again, part of the TID five area, um, the extension, Ashley Capital, we've approved over time. So a lot of these approvals, we continue to see them because as a board, obviously, we need to be, uh, making sure that each, each segment of the project moves along and based on our codes and ordinances, you know, all of these come to us in bits and pieces. But this is the, uh, completion of the, uh, infrastructure and roadway for, uh, Ashley Capital and, uh, in that TID five area, we've been anticipating it. And so we now have it before us, uh, as we have a motion for to approve. Butane Peterson was the awarded bidder. In looking at the bids, I'll tell you, we're, you know, we're keeping them busy writing, that, some of them are so close, it's amazing. So, it's very competitive out there and I feel like we're getting a lot of value for our dollar at this point in spite of the higher prices, uh, we're getting a lot of value, so, that's all.
Okay, with that, I'll call the vote. Roll call please.
Hewitt?
Aye.
Washburn?
Aye.
Eastman?
Aye.
Claussen?
Aye.
DeGroot?
Aye, motion carries. Uh, so item F, we got a public safety issue, discussion, possible motion regarding ordinance 14, 2022, prohibiting entry into unlocked vehicles without the owner's consent.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance 14, 2022 prohibiting entry into unlocked vehicles without the owner's consent.
Second.
So I hear a motion and, and a second. Uh, this is something that was before us, uh, at the previous call meeting, a couple of weeks back. Uh, it was, uh, it was brought, uh, to us, uh, by Chief Soans and it had to do with, uh, uh, illegal activities, uh, going on in, uh, certain parking lots. Uh, if, if you'd like to, uh, revisit that, Chief.
Yep, Mr. President, this is the one that we spoke about two weeks ago and it stemmed from Case High School. Um, groups of kids on their lunch hour would just go through the lot, find an open door, plop inside a car, use drugs, other activities are happening in these cars as well. Uh, as of right now, we don't have a way to, uh, nothing that prohibits this. Um, the only thing we could do is if the vehicle's locked and they enter, we do have that. So this would give us a mechanism to enforce, uh, such activity through a ordinance citation. We, we do have, as a matter of fact, um, the other time that this would come in handy for us, I just read this call sheet, uh, today. Yesterday, we had a resident call, um, sometime Saturday night, overnight, people entered her vehicle, she forgot to lock it, rummaged through, nothing was stolen. Um, however, with nothing taken, the vehicle being unlocked, it's, it's not even illegal to do. We don't have anything to prohibit that in the village. So this would, this would help us.
Go ahead, John.
Chief, who will communicate directly with the, um, principal or a Case High School?
Uh, our SRO will take care of that.
Okay.
Yeah, our resource officer.
Any other thoughts?
It's kind of a sad day that we have to do this, but, you know, let's do it. Give you another tool in your toolbox to keep those kids in line, you know. Seems sad to think that's our reason for, you know, but, moving it along, but...
I would agree.
But we support you, Chief, in your need to be able to do your job.
Thank you.
Okay, so on the matter of ordinance 14 dash 2022, roll call please.
Hewitt?
Aye.
Washburn?
Aye.
Eastman?
Aye.
Claussen?
Aye.
DeGroot?
Aye, motion carries. Uh, looks like we've got a couple of personnel, uh, human resource type issues. Uh, number one, discussion possible motion regarding an agreement with Richard Herman for plumbing inspection services.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve an agreement for plumbing inspection services between the Village of Mount Pleasant and Richard Herman as presented.
Second.
So I hear a motion and a second. Uh, this is something that was discussed at some length at a number of call meetings. Uh, Tony, did you want us to speak to it at all?
I can briefly, sure. Um, again, this stems from the, uh, consolidation of the highway and utility managers into a superintendent in the, uh, public works department. And one of the duties of the utility manager was also to act as the plumbing inspector. Um, and due to workload issues, obviously, um, some of those inspection requirements need to be, uh, contracted out. So again, a lot of the residential stuff will stay in-house with the building department. This is primarily the commercial inspections that will, uh, be subject to, to this agreement with, uh, Mr. Herman.
Okay, any other thoughts from the trustees? Get you some help. Um, so regarding the agreement with, uh, Richard Herman for plumbing inspection, uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. And we have another one here, discussion possible motion regarding an agreement with McGrath Consulting Group regarding a full classification, compensation, and benefit study.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve an agreement with McGrath Consulting Group regarding a full classification, compensation, and benefits study.
Second.
So I hear a motion and a second. Uh, again, this is something that was fully vetted at a previous committee of the whole meeting, but given that we've got, uh, Carol, uh, here, if you just wanted to, uh, uh, touch the highlights of, uh, why we're going back into this.
Certainly. We proposed this, um, as we had had a study a couple of years ago. Um, the environment has changed drastically in the last couple, three years and this may not pertain to all positions here as far as a lot of changes, but we want to make sure that we are, uh, up to date with our wage structure so that our employees know that we are staying on top of this for their benefit and there may need to be some adjustments. But, um, we feel that, uh, in speaking with our consultant for one thing, that it's a recommendation on their part as well because, uh, some areas in the market is, have changed quite a bit. So that's why we proposed, with your approval, that we would like to go forth with this.
Any thoughts?
I think that, um, when we talked about this prior, um, I think since then even, I've seen many articles published. There's been a bunch, a bunch of things that I've read that have popped out and it talks about how this economic job climate is. It's very tricky. And for municipalities in particular, we know there's a lot of hopping around right now and in order to be consistent, in order to make sure that the people that we are attracting to the Village of Mount Pleasant for staff purposes are, uh, high quality and high caliber, we need to make sure that we're pre, uh, presenting to them the potential for compensation packages. And I think even more importantly, to keep the employees here happy that we have, that we love, cherish, and wanna make sure, Tony, that you stay here with us.
And my...
And, and Carol and Mike and, and Sam and Robin and... Tony and I have this thing going, so I apologize for, uh, for pu- for pointing him out. But in any event, it's a very worth...
And the clerk too.
Can we delete that from the...
All the employees.
No, it truly, I, in all seriousness, I, I, it's late, we're, you know, we've had a long night, but in all seriousness, it's very important that we position ourselves well in the job market to retain our, our existing employees that we cherish, as well as recruit new ones that are high quality. So, and high caliber. So Carol, good job in, in the recommendations and thank you.
Um, yeah, it's a, it's a dynamic market and, uh, the salary, the benefit, uh, structures are a moving target. Um, you know, we always want to be competitive, uh, when we're, you know, reaching out to employees, new employees. Uh, and we don't wanna shoot ourself, uh, unforced errors, you know, in the foot uh, because we're missing the mark because we don't have the right information. So it's, uh...
And it's so different than it was years ago. You know, years ago, you would have, you know, you looked at an employer as your life and, and now the next gen, these generations coming along, two years here, two years here, hop, hop, hop. And if we can, you know, the way for us to remain consistent and viable and really strong is to encourage the, the length of employment as well by having good contracts and benefits available to our employees. So, we'd like them to stay for a long time and feel like this is home. That's all I got.
Thank you, Nancy. Uh, so on, so on that, uh, note, uh, regarding the, uh, the agreement with the McGrath Group, uh, roll call please.
Hewitt?
Aye.
Washburn?
Aye.
Eastman?
Aye.
Claussen?
Aye.
DeGroot?
Aye, motion carries. Um, so let's just jump down to reports. It looks like nothing, 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 nothing. Uh, item seven, uh, announcements and/or recognition of village residents, employees, memorials, and non-political community events. Anybody have anything good for the cause?
No.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I make just one comment real quick, 'cause I don't know how the, otherwise the, tell the board, but, uh, the week before last, we received from the state of Wisconsin, eight brand-new ventilators that are valued at about $24,000, $25,000 apiece. So make a long story short, during COVID, the state purchased a whole bunch of brand-new ventilators that were never used, so now they're out trying to distribute them and, uh, we were able to get eight of them. We're not sure exactly how we're gonna use them in our strategic plan. We talk about increasing the type of EMS service that we provide, so we're working with our medical director. He'll develop protocols and we'll figure out how they're gonna fit into our EMS service. But eight of them are valued at about $24,000, $25,000 apiece for no cost.
Cool.
Wow.
Yeah, nice.
How about that? Well, kudos to the state, I guess.
Yeah, right, significant.
Okay, um...
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
I hear a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Yeah, I guess so.
We stand adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.